Meeting minutes from September 28, 2023. Does anybody have any comments or changes or any corrections? Seeing none. Would somebody like to? And by the way, the appendix of the resolutions are not being voted on. They've already been voted on, but they're just packaged together with this. So would somebody like to move the meeting minutes from September 28, 2023?
Move.
Did I give a second? I'll second them. So moved by Mr. Katzoff, seconded by Chair Pearson. Do we roll call?
I have a minute to you.
Okay, then it's.
Hi.
All members?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining?
I'm also abstaining.
We have two abstentions. We have one, two, three, four, five yeas votes. Got it? Okay, we have no consistency determination. We have two resolutions on the agenda this evening. Resolution 2023-17, appointing our planning board secretary Ms. Nish. I will move. Mr. Camudi seconds. Can we get a roll call vote, please, on resolution appointing Kathleen Nish as Secretary to the Planning Board? Mr. Bernardo?
Yes.
Mr. Katzak?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Abstaining.
Mr. Camudi?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Chairperson Pearson?
Yes. The resolution passes. And the second resolution, Resolution 2023-18, appointing the Planning Board Township of Verona, appointment of professional planner H2M. Can I get a motion?
So.
Mr. Camudi moves?
I'll jump in.
It's a.
Dig it.
Tommy, Tommy seconds. Can we please get a roll call vote for this? Mr. Bernardo?
Yes.
Mr. Katzak?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Abstaining.
Mr. Camudi?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Chairperson Pearson?
Yes.
The motion passes. The resolution passes. This evening, on our new business, which is our next section, we will be handing this presentation over to Carrie Bass and Jamie Bornstadt from Sustainable Verona on their findings and research into the heat islands in Verona. Please, welcome.
Thank you.
Just make sure your mic is on. Ready for me?
I'll answer your mic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for having us. I'm Carrie, 30-year resident of Verona, chairperson of Sustainable Verona, the Green Team, also work full-time in finance for a healthcare company, and Jamie's an engineer. We are here tonight to present to you our findings regarding heat islands in Verona. Just in case anyone is not aware, there is a nonprofit organization called Sustainable Jersey, and their mission is to assist municipalities with becoming more sustainable. And in order to do that, requirement is to have a Green Team. So that's why Verona has a Green Team, in case anyone ever wanted to know. It was started a few years ago, and in 2021, we achieved, I wasn't on the team at the time, but the Green Team achieved bronze certification. And what that is, is it's a, Sustainable Jersey provides a framework, which is a points system of sustainable actions that the municipality can complete a number of points, and that gives you the certification. So to continue with that momentum, the Green Team will be applying for silver certification in 2024. The way that it works is a lot of the actions are renewable. So an example of an action is like prescription drug drop-off. I think that was something that was developed as part of the bronze certification. We can renew that. It's still ongoing. It's still active. It's a functioning action. So we have a lot of actions that we will be renewing, and then there will be some new actions, which is, brings us to the heat island action. Additionally, the PSENG Institute for Sustainability Studies, which is, I believe they might be housed at Monmouth State University, they offered a program where you can apply, a municipality can apply and receive some assistance in completing actions from Monmouth State graduate students. So we applied, and we received the assistance of three graduate students this past spring. On the application, we had to list four actions that we were interested in completing, and they chose one, and they chose this heat island action. And that's how we ended up working on this action. The students that we received were all, we got three graduate students, and they're all graduate students in sustainability studies. So basically, what they did, they, we met with them, and they chose to research three topics that were related to heat islands. One was albedo, one is green infrastructure, and one is turf. So I just wanted to give that background before we go into the paper, which I know you all have a copy of. The paper is what we put together, is what we will be submitting to Sustainable Jersey, and part of the requirement is to, I hadn't said this already, the part of the requirement is to present your findings to the Planning Board. So it was an interesting action, and when you think of heat islands, I'm actually going to jump to, let's see, we have a table of contents, and really, the way we broke down our table of contents was by the requirements for the points. So there's tier requirements. You can get 5, 10, 15, or 20 points for this action. Like I said, for silver certification, we have to get, we have to reach 350 points. So it is a point system, and you have to complete a certain number of initiatives to get your points. So that is how our table of contents is broken down. You'll see, we have, really, part of Tier 1 is showing where your, where your heat islands are, the map, the inventory, and your planning board presentation. And then if you take it a step further, you can identify a mitigation plan or strategies to address your hotspots. And that is, kind of, we based that on the research of the students when we came up with the mitigation plans. When you think about heat islands, I think you might hear the term urban heat islands. So it's really something that you might see more in a city. Through Sustainable Jersey website, actually, you can go onto their website, and you can see all the towns that have applied for this action, and you can read their reports. So I did do that, just to see who else has done this. A couple towns actually didn't really have heat islands, but Newark was one of them. Newark has 17 heat islands, hotspots. Woodbridge has eight, and Verona has two. So the heat island is really a parcel of land that, where the surface temperature in hotter climates is hotter than the rest of surrounding, surrounding areas. Did I capture that? Okay. All right. So let's go to, we do have an executive summary, which kind of explains what the paper is for. That's page three. And let's jump to Verona's heat islands on page four. So this is the map. This map is provided through a link on the Sustainable Jersey website. They use Landsat 8 satellite imagery to show surface temperature, and you can zoom in anywhere in the country. And you can see where your heat islands are, which are represented by like a dark red or a dark orange. So the first map that we pasted in, we had the borders, and we're just showing the aerial view.
Where Verona is.
Yeah, where Verona is, the borders, and then where the heat islands are. And then we specifically profile them. So I think I'll just jump to the next page where they're numbered. So now we're on page five, and we do have to number our heat islands. So the first heat island in the dark red, you can see, that is actually the turf fields at the high school, the Paul Galt Field. The second heat island is the Pilgrim Shopping Plaza. And then we did number, notate, three, four, five, and six, which, number three is at Centennial Field. Number four is the municipal center, actually, kind of around the police station. Number five is really asphalt parking lot at Richfield. And then number six, you can see, is the corner of Compton and Bloomfield Avenue, and it's, I think it's the Accura dealership. Those aren't showing as dark red, but we do, we did point them out. We wanted to note that when we started with this action, the map on the Sustainable Jersey website was from 2016, and so we asked them for a more recent map, and we were, and we were actually able to do a comparison. So in 2016, I actually don't have this in the report, but you do, but it's a little blurry, so I might, we might add it. But in 2016, the two heat islands were Centennial and the Pilgrim Shopping Plaza. And in the past six years, the Centennial Field got a little lighter, and we believe that is because of the maturity of the trees. And then the Doc Galt Field, the turf field, wasn't there six years ago. So now it is showing as more of a primary hotspot. So we thought this was all pretty interesting, didn't know these existed in Verona. And does anybody have any questions up to that point? So then we take a look, and we have to, if we, as part of the requirement, we have to do a couple different views. So if we go to the next page, page six, they have a, and this is all through the heat island map, the link through Sustainable Jersey. They want you to show the tree canopy cover, and obviously, you can see, you know, where Verona Park is, and where the darker aspects of Hilltop. I did ask them why the hotspot number one shows dark green, and they said it's a little misleading because the turf shows it that way, even though we know that there's no, really no tree cover in that area. They also do the next page on page six. They want you to show kind of a social vulnerability map. The social vulnerability is the community's capacity to prepare for and respond to the stress of hazardous events. Verona doesn't really have a lot of social vulnerability. This is what showed up. And then we also have to, had to provide a grid, a table, an inventory of Verona's hotspots. So that concludes our profile section. That's our inventory. That's what's happening in Verona, and that is what we saw kind of over a six-year period. Then we move into Tier 2, where we get into our mitigation plan, kind of our strategies. So when you think about heat islands, I actually heard recently that 2023 is now considered the hottest year globally on record. So when you think of heat islands, you think of them in relation to extreme heat. We're having some more, we're seeing more extreme temperatures. We're seeing longer duration in heat waves. And then you think about, how does that affect your town, and how does that affect, you know, if you have, if you have heat islands? So the first, we did walk the field with the students. We did site visits, and we did notice, you know, there's, there's not a lot of trees planted around this field. It gets very hot in the summer. We have some notes here. I actually, if you go to page eight, I actually bought a surface temperature thermometer off of Amazon, and I was interested in all of the reading. There's such an abundance of literature out there about turf itself, but this report is really regarding turf in relation to surface temperatures. So how hot does it get? So I went, I believe it was on my phone, it's July 29th, it was like a 90-degree day, and I went over to that, the field, and I stood over the 50-yard line, and I took a temperature reading. And on the turf, it was 130 degrees, surface temperature. When I did leave, I said, oh, I should probably take a temperature of the grass. I probably need to add that in here, but I was walking on the asphalt path, and I just saw a patch of grass, and I took a temperature, and it was about 98 degrees. So it was, so you can see that, it's pretty evident that the turf, the surface temperature of the turf during a hot summer day can get exceedingly warm. So when you think about that as a township, as a community, you know, what does that mean? Can we cool that? Now, obviously, we're in the Northeast, so this might be more of an issue in Texas or Arizona, you know, when they, when they're having, you know, 100-degree days. So we did have to come up with, so how do you want to address that? What would you want to do about that? We did notice on the field, again, back, we're still with the Doc Galt Field, there is patches of grass along the fence, inside the fence, running along Sampson. So we thought that that would be a good place for tree planting. The Shade Tree Commission did work with the Board of Ed, and they applied for funding for trees, and they had a few trees they wanted to plant there, but they got a response that the funds were exhausted. But we do think that that would help. Another idea that, that, you know, the students and we came up with in doing the review is maybe, and these are things that we also saw, that were, have been successfully carried out with, in other places, or maybe installation of canopies. Removable, removable canopies, maybe over the bleachers or over the dugouts. We know that when the marching band had a practice, they used, they set up some tents. I know that the marching band camp is the last week of August. We did look into, there are products out there that actually are designed to cool turf. There is, you can water down the fields. There are turf cannons. There is actually a product like Tea Cool. I spoke to the owner of the company to ask him how that worked, and that's another pellet, but it's a more natural pellet, but it's actually, you spread it, I think, like a fertilizer, and it cools the turf. And then there's also, you could restrict the use of, where I'm on page 10D, you could restrict the use of artificial turf in future development, and you consider the use of something that's more natural and doesn't get as hot. One of the things that I saw in the research was that you can restrict the times and the usage. My daughter's a softball player, so when you think about that softball field, and she was a pitcher. So the pitcher is really the player that's in motion most of the game. She played in a summer travel league, and she didn't end up getting heat stroke. It was a 90-degree summer day. So when you think about your players, your marching band members, you know, how can you protect them from extreme heat? So we had a couple examples here. This is from Maryland, the Maryland, Montgomery County Public Schools. So they have developed heat guidelines, and they're posted on all their artificial turf fields, and those are, these are the three bullets. Like anytime the outdoor temperature exceeds 80 degrees, coaches exercise caution in conducting activities on artificial turf fields. When outdoor temperatures exceed 90 degrees, coaches may hold one regular morning or evening practice before noon or after 5:00. When the heat index is between 91 to 104 degrees, between hours of noon and 5:00, school athletic activities are restricted on artificial turf to one hour with water breaks every 20 minutes. So these are things to consider regarding that field. These are some of the mitigation strategies that we came up with and how to deal with the, you know, extreme temperatures. The, any questions before we go to the next heat island? The second heat island is the Pilgrim Shopping Plaza.
I have a question.
Sure.
Or two.
Sure.
Just on the, the heat index, from what you just said, is it more about, like, public safety for people like in that area?
Yes.
Or is it, are you also trying to mitigate, say, like, you know, the, it's, you know, diffusing into the climate and, you know, as, as just a spot to cool down?
Yeah. It's, it's in that area, right? So as a municipality, okay, we have two heat islands. What, what can we do to protect the people that are there at that time?
There at that time.
Yeah.
Okay. Carrie? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, just, and listen, plant trees wherever you want, but you did mention, you know, more trees, the better. I, I just, you mentioned also funds being exhausted, so use them wisely. The places I see, particularly on Sampson, that's on the north, so I don't know if you're going to get, you know, based on that the sun is more southern.
Yeah.
So I don't, you know.
Right.
If you're calculating that, just.
Well, we were thinking of what I was thinking of, my son did marching band, and I remember delivering him lunch one day. I'm shameful to admit I delivered him lunch, because I probably hadn't packed it in the morning. They all had the break, and they were all under trees. They just ran to the trees. So I was thinking, at least, at least it's a place to go if you're feeling overheated.
So, right, you may not get the index down yet.
Right. May not get the index down, but it's a respite.
Right, even for, like, say, parents watching or something like that.
Right. Or elderly.
Plant them.
Yes.
Thank you.
That was our thought.
I had a question, just in terms of additional mitigation strategies, like you noted installation of canopies. Have there been any products, like reflective tarps or anything, that have been successful in keeping the temperature low when not in use, and then you roll it up when they need to use it?
Yeah. Things like that could happen, and also the color of the turf. They've used lighter color turf kind of for the same thing, so it's more of a permanent thing, where the turf is naturally reflective. So, yeah, that would help.
Yeah, and one of the ideas, what we noticed, was the, the boys' baseball field, they kept the initial dugouts, which are pretty much completely covered cement, but the girls' dugouts had like a plexiglass back, so they're kind of, so the sun could beat right in on their backs. So there's no relief. There's no hiding from the sun. So maybe installation of a canopy over the, you know, the girls that are warming up, the ones that are sitting in the dugout, the coaches, et cetera. That was where that idea came from. That was Jamie's idea.
Carrie, I don't know if you said it before, but is the lower, is that sprinkling?
I don't think so. We didn't, I don't think we sell sprinklers.
Because I know Centennial was sprinkled. I don't know if they.
Sorry, I don't know if I missed it, but were there mitigation strategies offered for, I guess, items two, three, four, or five? I see, I guess, one and.
We focused on one and two, because they were the dark orange. And really, the other four locations, what we wanted to note was in the six years, they've gotten darker. So when you think about the, and we were going to say this in the conclusion, but when you think about the rising temperatures, you want to not only focus on your heat islands that you have now, what can you do to keep them from getting worse? What can you do to keep any more from forming? You know, think about, what's the map going to look like six years from now?
What's the relationship between the major hotspots and the ones that are now developing? What, is there?
They're just not as, like, they're not 130 degrees surface temperature on a 90-degree day. They're not, they're not emitting as much heat.
Yeah, so like, if you look at the types of, for the less hot ones, so one of them is also a strip mall, but when you compare it to Pilgrim Shopping Center, Pilgrim Shopping Center is huge, and like the, all the asphalt and all the dark roofs, it's a much bigger thing. So it's gonna, just the sheer mass of it just compounds it, and it makes it hotter, just because it's, it's not broken up. So you do have a strip mall also at Compton, between, Compton and Bloomfield, but it's just not as big, so it doesn't get as hot. And there are more trees, trees covered in the area. Same with the parking lot.
The Richfield?
Richfield parking lot. It's, it's hot because it's a big asphalt area, but it's just not as big as Pilgrim. So in comparison.
So the longer that those main areas go untreated, the greater, I guess, what we're saying with the six years is the longer that those main areas go untreated, the worse these sort of borderline areas will become over time.
Yeah, especially if we're seeing hotter days in general, everything's going to be compounded. Like, everything's going to get a little worse. So if we have naturally hotter days in the summer, those areas that were once orange would maybe just be red. If all conditions are the same, just hotter days, they're going to be also hotter. Yeah. So it would be good. So the requirement for Tier 2 was just to do mitigation strategies of the two red spots of the, but we were supposed to, we are required to profile all the yellow, orange, and reds, but give mitigation strategies just for the reds. But, you know, if we can tackle the reds, the other ones will use this, you could use the same mitigation strategies there. So like, we should talk about the Pilgrim.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Because there's, there's a lot you can use in these areas as well.
So moving to page 10, I don't know if any of you have been to say, to grocery shop at the Pilgrim Shopping Plaza on a hot summer day. You, I have, you know, you can really feel the heat coming off of the asphalt, and they also have a very dark roof. So it's, it's, and you see this, like, in, when I looked at Woodbridge's paper, one of their hotspots, very dark red, was a Walmart Supercenter. So this is, this is, you know, usually, usually what, this is very common. So the Pilgrim Shopping Plaza, we did reach out to the owners. We didn't get any response, because we do feel like there are some things that you can So we did look at albedo, which is, you know, the amount, the solar, the reflection. So VHS, it looks like it has a lighter roof, and that, I don't think the high school was showing as hot, but the dark roofs definitely make a difference. When you think about, you know, we talked a lot about the Pilgrim Shopping Plaza, because I don't know who pays the energy bills, but, you know, with a lighter roof and more trees, and maybe awnings, you know, maybe you can take the temperature down a little bit. You also want to think about your, I mean, if I were the owner, or if I owned a business there, you think about your clientele, and Claridge is right around the corner. They, I would think that the elderly probably avoid that plaza in the heat of the day. And then, you know, some of the stores, I noticed a lot of them pull shades, because at 6 o'clock in the afternoon, the heat is beating right into their windows. But some of them, like, there's a new stretch lab. They want, I think they want people to see into that, into that business and see what they're about. So they don't want to cover, they don't want to pull blind, so you don't know what they are, but the sun just beats right in there. So if you think about an option like having awnings, at least the awnings would cover that big cement walkway, provide shade, provide respite from the sun, provide some coolness. So we have albedo as a, as a possible mitigation. We have, one of the students studied green infrastructure, and we did take a picture. This, now moving to page 12. They really have nothing in place as far as trees or even any type of green infrastructure, and they do have these little islands there, and they're mostly filled with stone. That's, that's an option, and awnings. So that's what we talked about. Regarding the shopping plaza, you know, it's privately owned, so we can only do so much. I tried to reach out to them, because I felt they might be more amenable to maybe just say, listen, we have these students, and they, and they did some research, and they want to present to you their findings. You don't have to do anything that we say, but we just wanted to let you know. You know, your shopping plaza showed up on our map as a, as a heat island. It gets extremely hot. One would think, as a business owner, you know, what can we do to cool that down so that people aren't avoiding us? Super hot there in the summer. So that's, that was our second hotspot, and that's, that's what we came up with for, for the Pilgrim Plaza. And that was basically it. We have a conclusion, you know, that we recommend implementing some of the recommended mitigation strategy outlined in the report. So we would get another five points if we can prove that one of our mitigation strategies is implemented, and that could, that could even be just restricting times, use times on the field in hot days. We do recommend to start with the hotspot number one, since Verona has more control over that space. And then the committee recommends exploring and implementing alternatives to artificial turf, incorporating green infrastructure, and increasing albedo for any future maintenance and development projects. So we just would, we just, one thing I've noticed with Sustainable Jersey is, is a big part of the mission is just building awareness. You know, I didn't know these hotspots existed before this, before I joined the Green Team. So just being aware of what's happening in Verona, and, and from a sustainable perspective, you know, what you can do to mitigate any of these things. So thank you for hearing us and taking the time to read our paper, and we hope that you've gained some insight about it.
Carrie, just a, I thank you for your presentation. Just a couple questions. Have you spoken to the school district about this? I mean, the township really doesn't have a lot of, say, of the school district property. Have you spoken to them? And if you have, what has been there?
I haven't spoken to them. You know, the Sustainable Jersey has a whole nother program called Sustainable Schools. It's like an arm, where they do a lot of stuff. So that is kind of on, we just joined the Green Team last year, and then I took over as chair in the spring. as chair in the spring because, because people had to move, as often happens in these committees. So I would love to partner with the, the schools. I feel like what I'm seeing and one of the reason, one of the main reasons I joined is I really wanted to understand recycling better. And coming from a finance background, I feel like there's a lot of opportunity in this day and age to, to become more sustainable, but also maybe defray some budget items, right? So, you know, and then, and then working with the schools would, I think would be a good partnership. I know that Carol Thomas on the Shade Tree Commission, she's the one who applied for the grants for the trees. So she does work with the schools because she has that in with the schools. But no, I haven't spoken to them yet about it. I think she made them aware that it, that this is, exists.
I mean, I would contact the superintendent. I mean, I think the, if one of the goals is to get the recommendations.
Implemented.
Implemented. The owners of Pilgrim Plaza, I have a suggestion for you on that.
Okay.
But owners of Pilgrim Plaza aren't going to be super responsive unless you organize a little differently.
Right.
But in this circumstance with the school district, the superintendent of schools is a scientist by, by training.
Okay.
And would certainly be receptive and in my experience is receptive pretty much to anybody coming in. I'm not going to, you know, I don't speak for the district, but I would reach out to her because there are some things, you know, the fields are not being used right now, obviously. You have about four months before they start to be used again. This is a good time to start thinking about some of these items that may, I would start with the ones that are the lowest cost items.
Right.
And easiest fixes before going into the other, the other pieces. Because I think that we would get further as far as your certification if we got something. I'm happy to make that connection for you. The, on the Pilgrim Plaza piece, the owners of Pilgrim Plaza may not, they don't necessarily care about people get, going to the businesses or not because they get their rent regardless. It's the tenants who are going to push the landlords there to do that. So my suggestion would be start presenting your findings to the business owners and managers within, of the individual businesses and suggest to them that this could actually reduce their energy costs.
Right.
It could pull more people in. And certainly, I mean, that, that facility is highly unattractive also.
Right.
So, you know, even, you know, planting a couple of trees would be big. I don't know if awnings further in the front would be possible because of the fire lanes, they encourage on the fire lanes. But there is a large covered area there already, but that's a dark roof, right?
Right.
But I would, I would start to talk to the business owners directly and get them to say.
Yeah, we think that, we think that a white roof would have some impact.
Yeah. I mean, anything along that line, but the problem with that facility is, it's not, you know, it's, it's not a, it's, it's a difficult facility for a landlord.
Right.
Where it is and with long-term rentals and things like that. So it's one of those things to consider, but.
Okay.
Reach out to individual businesses. They're the one who want more business.
Right.
And potentially have some remedy to the situation. So start there. I mean, they generally would have more access to the landlord and if a lot of people call, landlord might be more willing to respond.
I was, I was going to also bring up, whoops. I was also going to bring up that when we were doing our master plan, we did have a long discussion about basically redrafting the zoning code around the Pilgrim Plaza. Obviously, we all probably saw on the news that Target is coming to West Orange and there's a lot of people that are very upset that even that parking lot is being underutilized from the green infrastructure perspective. And that is something that we really got a lot of support from our planner when we were talking about that section. Now, obviously, as you brought up, it's privately owned.
Right.
So any redevelopment plans are going to basically have to come from them. But if the zoning code is redrafted, then they would have to comport to some of the regulations and requirements of the zone. So I, I did want to just add that. And if I'm not mistaken, don't they really, I mean, I remember, because I'm helping Carrie with some of the actions to get certified as a silver certification. And I've spoken to a couple of the people at Sustainable New Jersey on the phone because I, obviously I don't know, sometimes there are a number of things that are necessary to qualify for the action, right? And you almost have to talk to somebody. They're very strict about separating sustainable schools from sustainable municipality. And they, they're like, well, you can't really talk about that unless your town government had something to do with it. In other words, if it has to do with the schools, then it's almost like, they're almost telling you, you're wasting your time doing work with the school system if you, if you're looking for points unless you're doing it from the sustainable schools. Have you found that to be the case in your, for the, you know, while you're looking to get certification? Or do you think that there is an opportunity to get both sides to work together and be able to glean points for, for certification from that? You know, I'm, I'm just looking at the, the fields.
Yeah. I think for, for tier three, like, so we're going up to tier two on this one. I think for tier three, where you have to actually implement something.
Right.
I think that's where we're separate about.
That's later.
This is just a profile, recommendations. We're not contacting the board, the, you know, yeah, the education board. So I think it, it is separate.
Right.
And then once we actually have to like get things into the ground, I think that's where we'll look into that. Yeah.
And the other question I had is obviously I saw the pictures of other areas as Chris brought up before, you know, different areas. One of them that looks like it's on its way to turning is Everett Field, which is obviously a discussion that's being had by multiple arms of, of our township right now insofar as what its future may hold. It actually looks like it's on its way to becoming a problem spot. So if turf were installed there, what are we looking at? We're looking at bright orange, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted that to be stated clearly. Thank you.
Yes. In relation to a heat island, yes. We, as Sustainable Verona have, and, and one of the students chose turf and there's more problems with turf than heat islands, but that's what we focused on for the purposes of this.
And you know, it would turn.
Yes.
And I, I find it interesting that you, one of your mitigation tactics for the turf fields was reducing the playtime on them, which is the exact opposite of the reason why people put turf on fields, because they think that it's going to increase the kids' playtime. But not in the summer, it's not. Because that's when it's dangerous.
Right.
It's, it's literally dangerous. Okay. Thank you so much.
Carrie, could, could you just review certification again a little bit and the benefits of certification? And also, as it relates to the private properties, properties like Pilgrim Plaza, I mean, we have these sites all over the state. Are there any incentives that are coming from the state or the Fed to help drive some of these mitigation tactics, especially in, in properties like that?
That's a good question. I'm looking at our actions, our, our plan actions. So the, so the actions are very varied. And so here's an example. Well, there's the actions that the environmental commission is completing have to do with can stormwater management, open space plans, natural resource inventory. We have the Shade Tree Commission in completing actions regarding a tree.
I think what he's asking, if I could clarify, is in order to implement some of these mitigation tactics, he wants to know if the state of New Jersey is giving any incentives for property owners that own these properties that have these issues, any sort of financial incentive to install any of these mitigation tactics?
Yeah.
Is that what you were asking?
Yep.
Okay. So if the state is helping aid or fund some of these.
Yeah, I think there are. Cause I think Christine was mentioning them too. We would have to look into it more, but I believe, I believe there are especially like the roofs, like the converting to white roofs. I, I believe there is some subsidies.
Yeah. I'm just trying to link it back to our, what will ultimately be a larger master plan discussion and kind of link it with what we're trying to achieve here, right? And tie it together with additional incentives to see how there might be a relationship between the two.
I bet you there are.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, obviously the, the Pilgrim Plaza site, right, is, I mean, it's.
1960 stormwater management.
Right. It's, it's clearly, it's clearly, it's clearly a problem, but it's also a problem that is being experienced throughout the entire state, right? And so there, there should be, I would suspect that there's, there's a way to sort of tie it together with what we're trying to achieve here through the master plan.
Yeah.
I would just be curious to see if in the last budget cycle, if, if, if any incentives, especially, you know, with the larger statewide discussion that we're having about sustainability, I'd be curious to see if there was anything in the last budget that, that allowed for either tax incentives or other incentives for properties specifically like that to, to make some of these changes. Because they make, you know, a lot of sense from a number of different perspectives, so.
I will tell you this, Chris, that the state has made stormwater utility system. So I would say what they're doing is they're disincentivizing, creating what we see at Pilgrim Plaza by allowing and enabling municipalities like Verona to basically pass a, a stormwater utility that would create income from those properties that have little to no green infrastructure, little to no infiltration on their site, and they would have to pay a fee per year in order to continue its existence in the same manner. I don't know if any municipalities have actually adopted the stormwater utility. It's obviously, it's very new and I think a lot of people, a lot of municipalities are a little bit intimidated to start passing that.
Yeah.
As a, as a rule. Those utilities could even apply to homeowners that have gone over on their impervious coverage percentage wise, according to the zoning code. So it gets tricky because you can't create two different classes of citizens, the commercial properties versus the residential's. It would have to be across the board. And I think that that's why it's not been passed. But, so there's the opposite of incentive that exists out there, but nobody's using it at this point. I mean, that, that's just.
Yeah, there's a lot of grant funding out there. So Carol is from the Shade Tree Commission. She's now applying, I think she's applying for a grant to expand the community garden, right? So there's a lot of grant funding. There's a whole page on grants. But as far as for incentives for private, and that's what I was getting at, like the list of actions, most of the actions are around, they, they improve the municipality's sustainability, not really, they don't really affect like the private businesses. But there's a lot of grant money as far as incentives for private. I'm not sure, I'm not sure. Yeah, we'll look into it. It's an interesting question. Yes.
If I may, I think a couple of, to, incentives to, to get implement, things implemented there in the private properties, I think two. One is with the albedo with the roof, you could sort of incite the, the tenants, as you said, you're an engineer with like, I don't know how, I'm sure you could calculate it, but you might need to know their HVAC systems, but you'd be able to say, look, you know, crunch, you would be, you know, that's, you know, you would save $50,000 a year. I'm sure it's a lot, or, you know, in that month. And, you know, they might use the landlord to just paint the roof. I mean, there's, you know, there's whiter than white these days.
Right.
And it would be a, you know, big difference and an incentive because their bills would go down. And that's a true environmental savings and sustainable because that means less energy's going there to cool it. The second one, this goes more on our side is, one thing I could think there is on the, the green infrastructure is the, and it's very odd exits and entrance to the, the lights. Now it's county roads, so that makes it, if there's some way we can say, hey, we could improve the traffic here by not doing this, you know, ridiculous kind of turn in and go right. And out of that, find an opportunity to put some green. Keep in mind, they also have to, you know, I always think of the piles of snow, so, you know, not just, not designing their parking.
They just want winter on us.
Yeah. Anyway, it, somehow maybe the traffic going in and out is, is a hook for us to put some influence, you know, to the town or something.
Like I said, they're, they're going to end up rezoning that property at the council level and come up with some kind of brilliant and genius plan to force their hand, to, to change that kind, that ridiculous parking lot, to make it a better fit for everybody.
For everybody.
And I mean, right now, that water, when, when it rains.
Right.
Popped it avenue right into Cedar Grove. A hundred percent of that water was right there.
Yeah. Like, you know, it's a hydrogen dioxide tax.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't even be leaving. It should be infiltrated somewhere. But anyway, that's a whole nother subject that needs to be addressed.
Yeah. The kind ask what the timeline is for, for that rezoning.
They're going to be working on it in the very near future. They just.
The, the project's in progress. We've retained the same planner that was approved tonight. So, and the planners have started working on it. It's going to be in two stages at this point. So we're looking at probably some drafts by the summer and then it would take a little while longer after that to fine tune and codify. So probably looking at a year out from now realistically.
Yeah. I'm finding that the timing of this action has been actually beneficial.
Yep.
Bring these things to everyone's attention. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's a very helpful.
Nice job.
Thank the students for us.
We will.
All the time and how you guys put into that. It's a great report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, is there anything else from anybody from the board? If not.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Mayor makes motions. Mr. Jacobson, is that me, the small members?
Aye.
Aye.
How many?
I don't know.
Yeah.
More than one.
Very much.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very much.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.